Alright ladies and gentlemen, before we proceed with the program, I'd like to remind you that if you are still hungry, you are encouraged to go back up, to get some food, and anything left over, Jared is taking it back to his house. If you're happy and you know it, clap your hands. We gotta do better than that. If you're happy and you know it, clap your hands. If you're happy and you know it, clap your hands. If you're happy and you know it, then your face will surely show it. If you're happy and you know it, clap your hands. Thank you so much. I'm Eric Curry. Blessed to be your emcee for today's event. It is quite an honor that Jared has asked me to be a part of this wonderful kickoff. For those of you who do know me, a lot of you in this room know me, I've done a number of things on the mic, from a reporter at Channel 11, to radio, to being the spokesperson for the Wake County Sheriff's Office, but through it all, emcee for the AKW Debutante Ball, but I have to tell you, this has to be the biggest honor I could have in my toolbox. God blessed me with a voice, He blessed me with a crazy personality, He blessed me with an opportunity to speak in front of people, and I only thank Him for that talent. But I thank Jared for trusting me to be a part of this. So with that, I will pay you handsomely later for what you did for me. We'll continue, you heard him already blessing the food. I'd like to once again bring up Reverend Dr. Shawn Singleton, Senior Pastor, Martin Street Baptist Church, for the opening prayer.
Let us pray. Gracious and all wise God, again, we thank you for allowing us to assemble here at this time. We thank you for the occasion. We thank you for Jared and his willingness to put himself out and offer himself for service to this community. Lord, we pray your blessings upon him, upon his family, upon all that he does. And we pray that you would continue to strengthen him and undergird him for the journey that he is undertaking. And we just pray that you would continue to order his steps in your word and provide for his every need according to your riches and glory. And again, we thank you for all of his supporters, those that have come out tonight, as well as those that could not come out tonight. And we pray that we would continue to rally behind him and support him so that he might go forth and do great things in your name. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. So, why are we here? Obviously, Jared Allison has already announced his candidacy, or filed for the candidacy for the District C. But in order to be the representative in this district, Brother Givens and Dr. Singleton, being vets, understand that leadership is everything. It's the ability of a person to guide and influence others towards a common goal, setting a vision, providing a roadmap to the future, motivating and encouraging others to take action, guiding people through the process, building morale by connecting people with other people through resources, ideas, and objectives. That's why you're here. Jared has obtained these qualities throughout his lifetime. Growing up on Lion's Way, raised by loving parents who demanded nothing but excellence from their children and grandchildren. Being raised in a community, in a neighborhood of educators, law enforcement personnel, entrepreneurs, and others who I can tell you did not hesitate to parent you if mom and daddy were not home yet. Believe that, right? We grew up together, in that neighborhood. The Farras, they know him as well. But I can tell you, if you go to the Word, you find a verse that defines leadership. Reverend Singleton couldn't break this down better than I, but it is written in Mark 9, Chapter 35, Verse. It says, "Anyone who wants to be first must be the very last and servant to all." Let me say that once again. Anyone who wants to be first must be the very last and servant to all. I'm gonna say that Jared Allison, if you've ever met him, Jared is not doing this for the shine. He's not doing this for the $5.50 you get an hour of being a councilperson. He has done the work in this community. He has raised two wonderful children. I might as well say young adults. Both Shaw U. graduate, well, not graduates, oh, let me take that back. I'm bringing that into an existence. Two Shaw University students. One very close to graduating. And as my parents would always tell their sons growing up, especially my father, you can act crazy all you want to in the house, but you're in the community, you representing your parents. So with that, I know that Mr. Allison, Big Pops, is very proud of this dude up here. Lord knows, I didn't anticipate him standing in front of you right now, knowing some of the crazy things that he's done in his lifetime. But he's here. As Oprah said in Color Purple, "I may be ugly, but I'm here." So I'm gonna change the script there. I may be Jared Allison, but I'm running for the District C seat on Raleigh City Council. With that, I'd like to bring up someone that often spoke, often would visit the sheriff's office when I was there to talk to the sheriff about getting this community right, especially in District C. You've seen him on TV a lot. Gerald Givens Jr., CEO, Raleigh Boots on the Ground, and a proud retired US Air Force veteran.
So if any of you of all that are better, just raise your hand. We acknowledge all the veterans in the room. Alright? As you all know, Jared served in the best air force in the world, the United States Air Force. And we have that in common. And all those Army folks that were sitting over there, we know we started out Army, but hey, it's all good. But Jared and I, we were talking. And he said, "Hey, I wanna run for office, and when I do, my event, you know, I want you to do a charge, just like how we would do in the military. In the air force, we have something called the Airman's Creed, and then we have something called the NCO Creed. And so, I sat down with a pen and paper, and I just decided to start writing. And I'm gonna do this in what we call our command voice. To all those folks that are hearing in the room that's in the military, know what that's like. At my command, squadron, attend, hut! Left face, right face, forward, ho! That's the command voice. So I don't get a chance to do that a lot. Especially since I retired. So I'm gonna go ahead and do the best I can, do this charge for you, to encourage you to serve us with the best possible life that you possibly can. Now, right? This is titled "The Elected Official's Charge." Provide people with a government that is grounded in democracy, equality, and justice by upholding integrity, transparency, and unwavering dedication. Be attentive to the people's voices, comprehend their requirements, and fight for their causes. Work tirelessly to develop policies that advance the well-being of all in making sure that no one is left behind. Ensure that your decisions align with the principles of fairness, inclusivity, respect, and the diverse fabric of our community. Ensure that communication is open and honest, creating a government that is accessible and accountable to all citizens. Take care of the use of resources wisely and for the public. As a good steward, make sure that your actions are motivated by the objective of building a better, safer, and more prosperous future for all. Maintain the highest ethical standards. Act with honesty and integrity and set a good example. To face any challenge with courage, resilience, while seeking collaborative solutions that lead to meaningful change. Never forget that you are serving a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. This is your elected official's charge.
Got a little scared right there. Oh boy. Gerald, you still got it. And now, I would like to bring up Mr. Tim Prince with Vinnie.
How's everybody doing tonight? So, I didn't prepare a speech, so Jared, just hope you let me speak from my heart. I've been knowing this man thirty-some years. Always been a stand-up guy, still a stand-up guy to this day. Okay? When I think of Jared, I think of the word integrity. I think of the word character. I think of the word humble comes to mind when I think of my brother. It also makes me start to think of things of, you know, Jared's gonna be a good city councilman. I like how Jared's out in the community, how he's dealing with the community, and he's not being behind the scenes. He's always with the community and doing whatever needs to be done. Okay? And I know y'all saying, "Well, Tim, you saying stuff like it's already happening." Where the word says, "Power like the death in the tongue." So I speak that into your existence, brother. Okay? I speak that into your existence. So, one thing with me saying that, can I get somebody that's gonna touch and agree with me on that? Can you touch and agree with me on that? Okay? So with that, we just activated our faith, right? So that means faith with our works is dead, right? So we have a job to do as well, as well as Jared does. Okay? So, we have to make voting, we have to make that important again. Okay? We have to definitely do that, okay? It's time for us to, just like how y'all ladies, get y'all nails done, get your head done on appointments. You know what I'm saying? Just how it's me and sit up in a barber shop for two and three hours just to get a haircut, we gotta make that voting important again, y'all. Okay? So with that said, you know, I just wanna definitely thank Jared for what he does, especially for Scotty and I, we run with Team Truth 919, and Scotty runs Catch the Kite. And we do mentoring at Tarver Road Center every other Tuesday, okay? And we get from maybe ten to twenty-five kids a night to come up there, and Jared's always supporting us by supplying the food for it. So we always wanna definitely say thank you for that, brother. So with that being said, folks, you know, we definitely have a chore that's in front of us that we need to get something done, okay? I tell people that, you know, and, y'all forgive me, I'm sorta nervous, yeah, I'm sorta nervous. That whenever something needs to be done, you know, we need to come together as people. Okay? If something happens at your house, if something happens at your house, that's happening at my house as well. Okay? So we need to come together as a people and make sure that we're doing things like it used to be done, taking care of each other, okay? So with that being said, just wanna say, brother, we're with you a hundred percent. Ready to make it happen for you.
Thanks, Tim. You know, the one thing that we hope that you leave this event in mind of, ask yourself if District C is in a better place than it was five years ago. When you drive up Six Forks Road, when you go up to Briar Creek, even driving down Hillsborough Street past NC State, then come back to Tarver Road, drive down Oakwood Avenue, the Newbury Avenue corridor, have we really advanced? Like our neighbors to the east, neighbors to the west and north? We have some smart people in this room. And with that, a prayer for unity from... He wasn't one of the original members of the Lion's Way Neighborhood Posse, but I can tell you the stories I get from my mother of her neighbor across the street. The neighborhoods that we had growing up are not, in most sense, the same. But it's good that when we have new neighbors to come into our old childhood neighborhoods, that displays the type of love of neighbor that Toby James gives to my mom. I appreciate you. Prayer for unity. I wish he wasn't on this agenda, then I wouldn't be tearing up. Come up, Toby.
Let us pray. Loving and united God, when you created all that you created, you gave humankind the responsibility to be good stewards of all that you had done. You bid us to care for one another and to work together in one accord that we might serve as one body to the benefit of all. Lord, you know that we have not followed your plan. Our history has spawned division instead. You know the need for unity is great in our community today. Through your love, you have encouraged us and provided a way for us to break down the dividing walls of hostility between us. Humble us to receive the gift of unity you have provided. Equip us to pursue what makes for mutual upbuilding and community. Let us look not only to our own interests, but to the interests of others. Encourage us to be ambassadors of your love and to reflect the truth that we are all one in you. And by the power of your Holy Spirit, may we follow you on the path that leads to love, peace, and unity. It is in your holy name that we pray. Amen.
And let me correct myself and apologize. He's Reverend Dr. Toby James. Thank you, Toby. Now, this is the fun part. I've been charged to introduce this young man. He's a friend. He's loyal. He tells you like it is. He loves Raleigh, specifically District C. And I can tell you our many discussions, Jared has some great things in store for this district. We're facing some changes, and to some extent, not really getting the answers that we have been asking. I can tell you this. I don't like to talk about people, or at least not in public. And I don't want you to raise your hand 'cause I know you've probably heard the same thing I've heard. There was always a little Raleigh vet going around questioning whether the current representative in this district actually lived in this district. Don't say nothing, but that's an impression that you would not get from Jared. Jared is everywhere. He gives from the heart. He gives from the wallet. He gives it in wisdom. And I could read all of this about Jared, but I'll let you do that. For those of you that did not graduate from Broughton Senior High School, we will have a reading session in the back afterwards. Now, that's only for the folks of our generation. I ain't gonna say my mama's high school, Washington High School, or Ligon High School. I ain't gonna say, I'm talking about Broughton Athens. You know? Bless y'all. The next voice you will hear, oh, hold on. Jared, we, uh... We got a surprise for you. I don't, you know, through all my years knowing folks, I was able to make a connection. And we know November is a big, big election. So without further ado, we can go ahead and pipe in a young lady who is now, was in Wisconsin today. She's gonna share a little bit about and understand what local politics is about. Kamala Harris. Oh, I'm sorry. It didn't come through, I'm sorry. Sorry, Jared, we'll work on that. Jared Allison, let's give him a round of applause.
If we weren't livestreaming, I would get even with him right now, but I don't want the people at home watching to be using against me later. Good evening, and thank you. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I'm forever and eternally grateful to you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. It means a lot to see so many smiling and familiar, wonderful faces in the room. What a community we have. Why don't you get yourselves a handle? Thank you. I appreciate you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Singleton. I bring, I appreciate you, sir. Thank you so very much. Gerald, aim high. I appreciate you. Thank you so much.
My bike win.
My man. Right, alright. Tim, appreciate you, brother. Appreciate you. Scotty, Ty, thank y'all. Appreciate you. Rick, your check's in the mail. Don't try to cash it. I am grateful to y'all. I don't know about you, but I was always told that to have a productive future, you must first pay respect to those who have paved the way for those of labor and sacrifice for you to advance. So before I start talking up a little bit about what I want to do tonight, I want to pay some respect to some people who have passed on, who have paved the way for me even to stand here tonight. Now, if I can have one of the bags, please? Thank you. I want you to know that I have been in touch with all of these great and wonderful families as I got involved in this race to run for Raleigh City Council, District C. And I've been meeting with some of these families. I haven't got a chance to meet with two particular families because they have some things going on. But I met with a bulk of these families, and I've talked with at least one or two or five of their family members. And I want to let you know that I had the privilege to spend some time with the Winters family, John Winters family, a few weeks ago, and it was an absolute privilege and an honor. So tonight, I want to recognize some of those great men who filled this seat before I could even think about the fact that they were the seat I didn't fill. So tonight, I want to present to the Winters family this small gift. And I recognize that I heard from them earlier today that they could not be here to see me, but... But I want to read the plaque, because this is very important to me. It says, "I personally recognize the many sacrifices of the late John W. Winters Sr., former Raleigh City Councilman, District C. I and the many citizens of Raleigh are forever in his debt for his efforts. I fully intend to carry out his legacy forward. Presented this 23rd day of July, 2024, Jared S. Allison, 2024 candidate, Raleigh City Council, District C." This will be provided to his family. They could not be here tonight, but I know they are watching, and I appreciate their support in allowing me to use the Winters name while I'm campaigning. I'm grateful to them. Thank you. Now, I also have gifts for the Lightner family. If any member of the Lightner family is present, would you please come forward? Hi, Lance. Lance Lightner. Grandson and parent Lightner, I will only... Grandson and parent of Lightner, our only African-American man. Lance, on behalf of myself, my family, and the many citizens of District C, I give you this plaque and a few other things in it that you may know that we have not forgotten your grandfather's sacrifice for our community. Thank you, sir. Another family that's near and dear to my heart. I had the privilege of at least meeting or knowing each one of these city councilmen. And they made an impression upon me that I will never forget. A member of the Knight family present, please. City Councilman William Knight Sr. left an notable mark on me, my family, our community, and our church over Martin Street Baptist Church. And on behalf of your father, thank you so much for everything. May we never forget what they've done for us. I also have gifts for the Campbell family. Is there anyone in the room related to the Campbells, aunt, cousin? Not only do I have the privilege of presenting this to Ralph Campbell's cousin, right? I also have the privilege of gifting this to my grandfather's best friend's daughter. I'm grateful. Ms. Julia K. Dang. I want you to know that Councilman West, Dr. West, was near and dear to my heart. In our last conversation, he asked me, I was gonna agonize and organize. I said, I'm gonna organize. He said, okay, well, let's get it done. So we're here tonight and we remember him. And I am more than happy to have the support of his son, James III, who called me today and had a conflict where he could not be here. But he wants me to know that he is with me all the way, like he says, his father will be. And I'm grateful, okay? And I have a gift for James too. Well, there was always that one school teacher at school who stayed behind everybody. He didn't care he was everybody's father. There was a couple of those at Broughton. But one in particular, we lost recently. He was a trailblazer. His name was Mr. Eugene Weeks. Mr. Eugene Weeks did everything he could to keep everybody straight. He didn't care who you were, what you looked like. He wanted to help everybody. Today, we remember Councilman Weeks, as we just lost him recently. And I have a gift for his family and I will be delivering it to their home shortly. So please give him a round of applause for all of his accomplishments. You know, all of these folks did great things. And all of them started to do great things by starting a conversation. Whether that happened over lunch or at work, or with a few friends over the phone, all of them aspire to make this community great. We remember them for this board, they board forever. I also want to highlight the work Tim Prince, Ty Hinton, and Scotty Barnes are doing with Truth 919 and Catch the Kite. They do amazing job at working with our youth and providing them with opportunities, food, clothing, direction, and a multitude of things that they might not otherwise be able to receive that many of us take for granted. They are truly doing God's work. I believe in their efforts and I put my money where my mouth is. When they call, I'm coming. I'll always be there, the best way I know how to be. Give it my hand. Thank you. Camilla Perkins. Camilla, will you please stand up? See who you are. If everyone look over your shoulder. Camilla is an amazing person who works tirelessly to help children to make good choices in life, to get education, to put education first. She also designed a coloring book to inspire African-American children to go to college. Please consider buying one of Camilla's books. And it's a great gift to give to someone. And she's in the back of the room. She has some. I hope some of you will leave with some tonight. Give her a hand for the wonderful work she does. You know, several generations ago, my ancestors settled in this great community, a welcoming community that you and I know today, intimately as Southeast Raleigh technically referred to as District C. Tonight, I am proud to gather with you in this great district at John Chavis Memorial Park. Chavis Park has always been at the epicenter of the civil rights movement. And it's a symbol of hope in District C. The park was named after John Chavis, an educator and preacher who became a civil rights icon. We remain grateful to John Chavis for all of the wonderful things he did and for the city naming this wonderful place after him, recognizing his sacrifice. A hand for John Chavis, please. District C has always been a community occupied by an equitable mixture of prominent licensed professionals such as doctors, lawyers, college professors, schoolteachers, tradesmen, and hardworking industrious people. I am the grandson of the late Dr. Burris and Mrs. Virginia Swayze, a dentist and a schoolteacher, both of whom lived and worked right here in District C. Both of my grandparents attended Shaw University. Today, I reside in their home located in District C on Lynn Hurst Drive. I am the son of Mr. Samuel and the late Mrs. Ross Allison. My father, a former school administrative businessman. My mother, a retired Wake County Public Schools Administrative Assistant. All my family members taught me the value of community service and sacrifice. I am the proud single father of two children. My son, John, my daughter, Virginia. Yes, I raised my children. I'm gonna say again, I raised my children. I am an Air Force veteran with more than 25 years of law enforcement experience. During my career, I have served as a police supervisor on college campuses, as a Wake County Sheriff's Deputy, as the Wake County Sheriff's Office Director of Detention Services, where I supervised 550 people. I also served as the Wake County Sheriff's Senior Advisor. I have also served on three county level boards that focus on improving the criminal justice center, core operations, and mental health services. I have also worked personally with mental health patients. I attend Martin Street Baptist Church, where my family has worshipped for more than 90 years. I can often be found volunteering with the blessings of the bag ministry, where we work to assist families who have food insecurities. I was the 10th person in my family to graduate from Shaw University. My son will be the 11th and my daughter will be the 12th in 2025 and 2026 respectively. We are dedicated to District C. I have a master's degree in public policy and public administration. My family lineage in this great district used to not be such a particular, special, and unusual thing. It was normal. But recent decisions and policies enacted by the Raleigh City Council and other elected officials have forced generational families, forced generational families out of once beautiful, affordable homes, closed generational businesses, and forced everyday, hardworking citizens to relocate. And right now, y'all know what I'm talking about. In this society, we have to work hard for everything we want. The government has an obligation to protect us to make sure we can maintain what we have. It is the job of your city council representative to work to prevent this from happening. It is the job of your city councilman to prevent this from happening. They should not be rubber stamping developers' plans. They should not be rubber stamping developers' plans. Any plans for developers to come into our community and make money should include us. I ask you today, where is your equity? Can anybody tell me where's your equity? My grandmother always told me, "If you want to lose what you have, put someone in charge who has nothing invested." Well, look at our current situation. Grandma was right. my soul is unsettled when I see the conditions in our community. Under our current city council's management, gentrification has accelerated, poverty and homelessness have risen. This shouldn't be. People have started living on bus stops. And I'm mad. Because this should not be the haves and the have-nots. Everyone deserves a basic level, a basic level of a decent living condition. And there's a shortage of mental health services and resources. I do not believe we should reward our current city councilman with another term based upon what he has failed to do. It's time for a change. You saw what happened over the last nine years. And if we just sit for another nine months, we won't have anything. All of us, the haves will become the have-nots, and the have-nots will be the forgotten. Fix it, y'all. Vote. Vote your conscience, vote your heart. Vote. When I'm elected, I promise to listen to your voices, keep you informed, do your will, and show you that I truly love my neighbor. I will fight for the helpless, the homeless, the forgotten, and society's invisible people. There are no invisible people. We just opt not to help them. We gonna fix that. I will utilize my education, my law enforcement experience, to work closely with the Raleigh Police Department to improve community policing efforts and to foster trust in the district. I will improve your safety. I promise. I had paid attention. I promise. I will not accept contributions from developers, real estate packs, or any organizations I reasonably believe can cause their appearance, even cause their appearance to the public, that that contribution may unduly influence my vote. To be clear, Southeast Raleigh, District C, is not for sale. It stops today. Don't get me started. I will work to bring affordable housing, adequate transportation, dining establishments, and jobs that promote providing a livable wage for the citizens in the district. Nothing less is going to be acceptable. And I want to be clear to those at home and those who have business interests in front of the city council. I do not oppose your presence. I oppose your methods. We will work with you, not I will work with you. Because I will represent the citizens in this district. And if you approach me again and ask me what you're gonna get for your money, I'm gonna find a way to record you and have you arrested. My vote is not for sale. Tell it. I'm gonna tell it now. I'm gonna have a witness for me everywhere I go. You ain't gonna get me, but I'm gonna get you. Here they come. 3303, 3301 Hammond Road, Wake County Detention Center. Trying to make a bribe. They got space for you. You know, I will work to partner with organizations that promote homeownership opportunities for those who may not otherwise have that opportunity. Creating generational wealth should not just be a goal, but a reality. To our first responders, who are near and dear to my heart. Cause I know what it's like to answer those 911 calls every night. I know what it's like to help those people who are in jeopardy. And I know what it's like to have my life in harm's way to protect another man's life or another person's life. Thank you for what you do. We appreciate you. Have a hand. Our silent waste personnel and city employees in general, I recognize that you are underappreciated and underpaid. And you lack the benefits you deserve while the people who are making the decisions are living high and mighty. And you are tighty because you're afraid to run over the budget at the grocery store. It stops today. I will fight, key word, I will fight any attempt to bulldoze Shaw University. And I will help to locate funds to support Santa Gusta University. And it starts with me. I invited Dr. Burgess. I did not receive response, but Dr. Burgess, I support you. I support everyone over at Santa Gusta University. And in this envelope, And in this envelope, I have written a personal check to start. I'm gonna give you a hundred dollars a month for the next twelve months to support you. And I'm asking anyone else who could afford to join in, join in. Uh, I'm gonna entrust this check to Rick Curry. Uh-oh. And Rick Curry would deliver to St. Augustine's University for me. Rick, will you come forward, please, and secure this check? I wanna make sure Rick is on camera, seeing taking this check. And Dr. Burgess, you don't get it. You know what he looks like. You're not gonna get him. Alright, thank you, thank you, Rick. I appreciate you. If everybody does a little, if everybody does a little, alright, it goes a long way. Alright. Now, these historically black institutions, HBCUs we call, are a vital part of our district and our lives. And well, for the land opportunity, Shaw University, where would I be? District C is a special place. No matter who you are, no matter where you come from, no matter what your resources, you are welcome here. Let's coexist. Let's work it out together. I am the only candidate, the only candidate for this office who is pledging to donate a minimum of thirty percent of my net compensation for serving under the City Council seat to youth and charitable program inside the district. Only one. Uh, Mr. President, take the entire stack. I give it to you, write. He's gonna pass a few of those copies around, and feel free to photocopy, distribute, and put them on your Facebook page, you know, take it out of the register of deeds. A minimum of thirty percent of the compensation that I receive for going on City Council is gonna go back to youth programs, and I'm gonna do it so that you see it and you know it's been done. And Tim will be talking. Scotty will be talking. It's not about me, it's about us. I'm calling on all of the other candidates for this District C race to join me and vote for me. Join me and vote for me because you know what I know, that you are gonna be bought and you're gonna sell the community, and I refuse to participate in that. God don't like ugly. You know, I ain't gonna do that. I'm gonna tell you this. I'm watching. I'm watching. We're watching. I have the education and experience. I'm asking the other candidate's supporters to join me, join us, to protect us so that we can all thrive, white, black, brown. We all can get down. Alright. Together, we will prosper. An education and experience and passion to get the job done. Tonight, I'm asking you for your support. I'm asking you for your vote, for your safety, for your voice. Vote. Jared Allison, Raleigh City Council, District C. Thank you.
Again, let's give another round of applause for the next City Councilman from District C of Raleigh City Council. And looking at the Board of Elections sheet right now, there are seven folks that file for this district. Of course, the seventh being the former mayoral candidate. I ain't gonna say no more. But I have received a word that at least four of them have dropped out already. After they watched this string. No, I don't know if that's true or not. We can always hope, right? So, before we come back up one more time to have Jared answer a few questions, anyone in this room that's part of any of the campaigns of the other candidates, I know somebody's in here infiltrating. I don't really know that, but I'm just gonna say it anyway. I want you to go back to your candidate to say, I just heard, "we read." This is gonna be a fight. We know that. But I don't care where you go, in the, at your church, walking in the neighborhood, in a school setting, or even at, in the meat section of Larry's supermarket when you're getting some chitlins. Spread the word. Spread the word about Jared Allison. It's because of all you in this room tonight, there's a reason that you decided to be here. Except for his children that were forced to be here. But other than that, please, seriously, spread the word. Spread the word. Spread the word. There's momentum. And the good part about this is, we mentioned it earlier, there is a gubernatorial and a presidential race. Folks are automatically coming out. People are mobilizing on the national level. In fact, I was a part of the Black Men for Kamala uh, webinar last night. They raised close to two million dollars in about three hours. The night before, black females did the same thing. There's mobilization. That's gonna go all the way down to the grassroots level. They're gonna get to that pole. That's when we have an opportunity to spread the word. We have a captive audience. Let's take advantage of it. Okay? And also, now I'm gonna go back real quickly into a job that I wish I always had was a male stewardess. So I'm just gonna do it real quick. In the back, you're gonna see posters with a QR code. As you can see here, and in the exit, no, there's nothing on that side, but right here. There's, there's cards on your table. Please take a picture of the QR code. It's also in your booklet. Please, if you don't know how to use your cellphone, we have help. What else? Huh? I can't. Checks? Oh, yeah, you can write checks. Please write checks. If you don't understand QR codes like my mama, hey, mom. I love you. I'll be over at the house Sunday with my color green. But anyway, uh, let's not just talk about it, let's be about it. Alright? We had some wonderful testimonials. Um, definitely, yes.
Where? Wow. It may be someone in the room that wants to write a check. Where are they sending it?
Where are they sending? That's a very good question. It's on the website, I've been told. It's on the website. All the information is on the website. Just use the QR code and you will find. Oh, we have some envelopes too? Boy, this is like a, this is like a new church. First service at Chavis Community Center. Happy New Year. So, this beautiful envelope, as you see, name, all that, this stuff, it has to be on there, correct? Uh, no anonymous. He's gonna play by the rules. Um, and there's definitely check, money, order, cash, hundred dollars, seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five, ten, other. No one can put just quarters in here. Thank you very much. Any other questions before I bring up Jared? Jared? You're in the hot seat, my friend.
I would like to express my continued gratitude to each and every one of you for your support. To all those wonderful families of those foreign City Councilmen who have passed on, thank you for the legacy that your family members left. Thank you for believing in me. Thank you for supporting my family and this race. And I'd like to thank my father and my children and my siblings for being here. You know, my mother kept this secret near and dear to her heart that I was gonna run for office. We haven't talked about it for some time. She was not able to be here tonight because she passed away last year, but she's here with us in our hearts. So we're grateful for that, for the love extended to her through us and shared with you as we move forward every day. Thank you all. God bless you. And I just want you to know, he's able. God bless you. Hey, and, 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 and I've been thanking them every day, so I, 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 thank you, Rick. I, I've been thanking my volunteers every day. I have had the best volunteers to put this together. I'm telling you, they worked day and night, took my phone calls, they're tired of hearing my voice, I know. I, I, I like my volunteers, I like my volunteers to stand up. If you can give my volunteers a round of applause, everybody raise your hand. And, and, and Mike and Kenneth, Kenneth and Mike, Mike and Kenneth, and John did, he ate the food while we talked. But Kendra and my girlfriend, Katina, thank, thank everyone, thank everyone, all the ladies over there, thank y'all so much. They've been so wonderful. And content has just, I know he didn't want any more of my phone calls after nine o'clock. And Ron Ron's in the back, Ron Ron's volunteering, and hey, Pam, thank y'all so much. I appreciate y'all so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. God bless you. And hey, I'll be here to answer your questions. So please don't run off. We got plenty of food. We're gonna stay here for a little while. Thank y'all so much.
Uh, just letting you know, before we close, obviously, we want to thank everyone for being here this evening. I am still shook from Gerald's uh, charge. I'm just gonna hear that in my sleep all night. And, and my final word for this evening. Of all the volunteers that have worked hard this evening, I'm the only one that got paid. Goodnight!
Thank you all for coming. There is cake, um, if you would like to have cake on your way out.